Yes, I'm ready.
Okay, great. All right. It is 7:52 on Tuesday, June 2nd, and we are here for the Town of Groton Regular Town Council Meeting. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. All councilors are present. That would be Mayor Granatowski, Councilor Bordelon, Baumgartner, Franco, Heed, Melendez, Aubrey, Parker, and Zepiri.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have a salute to the flag next. Councilor Parker, would you lead us in a salute to the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as well.
Thank you very much. We don't have any recognitions, awards, or memorials. We have no public hearings this evening. So we are on to Roman numeral five, which is receipt of citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. Let's see. We have the normal information in here about how to proceed as far as signing up to speak at the meeting. When you're called upon to speak, please clearly state your name and address. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes or less. Town councilors will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and can respond during the responses to citizens' petitions portion of the meeting. Mr. Burt?
I have John Goodrich on the list first.
Thank you. Mr. Goodrich, if you could just state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, John Goodrich, 1315 River Road, Mystic 06355.
You have the floor, sir.
Okay. Madam Mayor, Steve members of the council, first I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm sure many of you know, if not, at least Mr. Burt does, that my position on the Noink School property is that it should be open space or parkland. In my statement, I'll ask a lot of questions that are rhetorical and, you know, that you council members must ask yourselves and questions that the residents of the town will have answered by your decisions and actions on the Noink School property. As you guys may be aware, the land was originally seized under eminent domain to build the school. I know Mr. DeBarr, who sent you guys an email, who's a descendant of the people who had the land seized from them, have expressed that if the property is sold or not kept as open space, you know, that there may be some legal issues with him and his family. I don't want to comment on that any further because that's their issue and not my field of expertise. However, the question I will ask is, you know, the community group wanted to be open space. So, you know, it would seem very imprudent for the town government to move forward if there could be a legal challenge to it. That being said, there's two other more important issues that I see that are maybe even to the heart of the matter here, which to me is consistency with our town government and trust. What I mean by that is in regards to consistency. You know, it wasn't all that long ago we passed a sweeping plastic ban. And everybody said it was symbolic at best. It was a start. You know, we said we want to make Groton green, but it kind of appears we're stopping there. You know, I can't think of a less green or less environmentally unfriendly action than wiping out open space in the interest of building homes or something else. So at the end of the day, ladies and gentlemen, are we green or it's only when it suits us? And that's the question I think we need to ask. Let us also remember in this pandemic, open spaces have been sanctuaries, you know, places people have to stay home where they can get out, you know, get a little mental health, find themselves. So at this point, with what we're going through, I think wiping out open space kind of goes against the identity of the community and what's best for our community. And in regards to trust, you know, I want to quote David Collins, a column from a day, from a couple weeks ago. You know, I'll start the quote. You know, "The five to four vote last spring by the Groton Town Council to rescind its agreement with the volunteer community group that was trying to develop the Noink School property in the gardens and a park was one of the most ugly decisions I have seen by a municipal body around here in a long time. Who breaks a four-year lease agreement halfway through and with no good reason, reneging on a promise with a well-meaning community group volunteers?" End quote. You know, guys, we're all in a situation in our country right now, whether it be federal, state, local, you know, not this local, municipal departments in other parts of the country, where we see a violation of trust that these who are duty-bound to represent and protect. If I kind of ask my town council, my town government, do you guys just want to be one more on a list of municipalities that have lots that trust those that they represent? Or can we be a model of what town government should be? And really, your choice on this matter, the choice is in your hands. The other thing I kind of want to expound upon is, you know, Bula DeBarr was one of the people the land was taken from. You know, she was born in the middle of the 1918 Spanish Flu pandemic. You know, they bought that property so they would have an area for their family to grow up side by side, cousins, brothers, and sisters. And I think that's a point we have to look at right now. You know, now in the middle of this pandemic, do we want to be as we were in the 40s when the land was taken and, you know, cause the damage that family felt when their land was taken to the community at large? And, you know, in the middle of a pandemic, maybe it's a good honor to be with the bars to keep it as open space. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goodrich. Mr. Burt, do we have other speakers?
Yes, I have Becky Carlson.
Thank you. Ms. Carlson, you have the floor.
Hello, council. Thanks so much. I just wanted to say that both my partner and I are happy to hear that the town council is taking into consideration or open to what sounds like options for the Noink School open space. And we are currently residents at Five Harbor Court, which if you're not familiar, it's a property directly adjacent to the property of Noink School. And so basically, our view from the home offers us this kind of really unique front row seat to actually witness the number of constituents who frequent the area with children, pets, and various activities. I think especially in times of the most recent pandemic, the park has flourished with homebound families who have visited for some much-needed relief while in quarantine. And in a way, this space has been more than a refuge, but it's unearthed some of the traditional activities that we really don't see anymore of activities of family togetherness. We've seen children flying kites. We've seen grandparents giving golf putting lessons. There's been picnics, gardening, walking, jogging, wiffle ball games. And to us, the space has been more than a refuge for activity. But since we moved here one year ago in April, it's been largely responsible for allowing us to meet and make connections with our neighbors as well as citizens who are in the surrounding area that visit. So I think the connectivity here is what this has been all about. And the primary reason that we purchased our home was because of the location and its ability to access such a unique space. And we're also aware that there are more options that may be available at the council's discretion in the way of real estate, which could be profitable for the town in the short term. But when faced with the decision on preservation of history and occupancy of a natural green space for the community to enjoy and stay active, we hope that you'll consider this option. So one of the considerations we'd be honored to present to the community and the town council is the idea of an outlined community walking path. Myself and my family went out, walked it, and measured it, the perimeter around the Noink School property. We're happy to provide any information to the council. This was a proposed small walking trail that would be .28 miles around. We had the idea of additionally adding a few strategically-placed physical fitness stations promoting physical activity. Both my partner and I are Division One college coaches, so we know the value of physical activity in the way of stretching stations, balance beams, chin-up bars. We do hope that there would be trees also planted to replace those that were lost during the construction of the new middle school. And one of the things I believe Council Aubrey was speaking about earlier is the influx of real estate interest coming into Groton, which is hopeful for our town, which means that there's going to be other options, given the number of citizens that will increase that'll be able to contribute to local business and help our town thrive. And if I was in your shoes and I saw options that were going to make the town money in the short term, I might be tempted to look in that direction as well. But as citizens of this city, I know that we're not the only council in the state or any state that is involved in ongoing discussions how to repair and how to prepare and how to be the most fiscally mindful with resources, especially during this time. And it's our understanding that this has been a longstanding point of debate about what to do with the space long before we moved here. But it's a tough time, and we believe that it's a time that calls for creativity and being nimble in that creativity without erasing the preservation of history and keeping the green space as is with those creative options that we've just named. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Mr. Burt, do we have other speakers?
Yes, I have Jill. Let's see, is she on there? Let's see. Eugenia Villagra, next. And let me... Okay, she's ready.
Ms. Villagra, you have the floor.
Ms. Villagra? Okay, I'm unmuted now.
Great, thank you. You have the floor.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Eugenia Villagra, and I live at 76 Riverview Avenue. And I'm co-chair of Groton Conservation Advocates. On behalf of GCA, I'd like to thank all of you, Mayor Granatowski, members of the town council, Town Manager Burt, Town Manager McCauser, and the town staff. I'd like to thank all of you for the hard work you are doing for the town during these very challenging times. Despite these challenges, we cannot lose sight of our commitment to protecting the environment that sustains us here in Groton. As we did last year at this time, we urge you to preserve the property as a conservation space or a park rather than sell it for housing development. We prefer to think of the people of Groton not only as tax-paying units looking to save on property taxes, but also as people seeking overall quality of life. The Noink property provides that. It is easily accessible to hundreds of families by foot or bike who live within a mile or so and by car to those who live farther away. It attracts community gardeners, informal ball teams, picnickers, kite flowers, kite flyers, and parents with small children. Many in Groton have come to rely on spaces like this for recreation or quiet outdoor contemplation. Furthermore, developing Noink's six acres to accommodate new homes when dozens of unsold homes are already on the market in Noink won't lower our taxes in any significant way. Furthermore, the Conservation Commission's May 20th assessment of the property makes it very clear, based on Chair Larry Dunn's detailed economic benefit analysis, considering all options, that the best option would be to establish the community gardens as a permanent conservation and recreation easement to be potentially held by Noink's fire district and designated as a park. GCA agrees. Protecting Groton's limited open space is the way to go. Years ago, the town decided to allow the community to enjoy that land rather than develop it. This pandemic has demonstrated the immense value of our local public green spaces. Have you seen how parking lots in those green spaces have been full to overflowing these last few months? Please count all those cars in those lots as open space supporters and vote accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Villagra. Mr. Burt? Mr. Burt, do we have other speakers?
Sorry, it wasn't... I was muted. Michael Noel is up next.
Mr. Noel, you have the floor, please.
Yep. Hello, good evening. This is concerning the Noink School property also. I support keeping the property as a park, maybe adding a few more trees and a swing set for the kids. It's a really nice place, and a few of us have continued working on making it nicer, mowing and planting flowers, even after the town council disbanded the garden group. In this chaotic world, this little chunk of land provides a lot of peace for a lot of people. And it's already a nice park, and I hope we can keep it that way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Noel.
I think we have two people that are waiting that weren't pre-registered, but I have one other person on my initial list, Jill Karwoski, wondering if she's in attendance. If not, you know, we could ask for the other two people. Is Jill?
Okay, there's something in the chat. Ms. Carlson said Jill is here, but she already spoke.
Okay.
Jill's my partner of my household, so we already spoke. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Carlson.
I have Elizabeth Reisbeck. Liz Reisbeck.
I believe she is here.
Can you hear... Are we on?
Yes, you are. You have the floor.
Okay. I have a statement related to your future discussion of the pending ban on plastics, but I'm going to ask John Stever to read it because this format's very difficult for me to read. Thank you.
That's fine. Thank you.
My name is John Stever of Pound Ridge, New York, and I'm reading this statement on behalf of Elizabeth Reisbeck of 81 Main Street, Groton, Connecticut. Dear Mayor Granatowski and members of the town council, I am addressing you to express Groton Conservation Advocates' strong support of maintaining and implementing the new ordinance banning single-use plastic bags, plastic straws, and polystyrene carryout items beginning July 7th. The need for this ban continues to be great. With the advent of the COVID-19 pandemic virus, the amount of plastic from disposable gloves and other healthcare personal protection equipment has swelled to unimaginable proportions. All this new plastic is just adding to the waste stream, and more plastic is finding its way into Long Island Sound. Recent studies have shown that plastics are not only everywhere in our environment, but also in us, in every human being on the planet. We do not yet know what the effect of that contamination is, but we ignore it at our own peril. At the same time, we understand that this is a terrible time for small businesses in our community who are struggling to survive the closures required in response to the pandemic. The Groton Plastics Ordinance was passed January 7th, giving the business community six months to eliminate their single-use plastic items and switch to paper and cardboard. Businesses only had approximately three months to work on that reduction before the state required businesses' closures due to the virus. It would make sense, to an extent, an additional three months on the transition to paper and cardboard. Governor Lamont's executive order lifting the tax on single-use plastic bag gave important flexibility to stores based on guidance from the State Health Department. To guarantee the safety of employees, stores could require consumers to pack their own reusable bags. That was not should or must. While many stores are following this option, there is no science behind the supposition that reusable bags are more likely to carry the virus. In fact, in recent weeks, the spokespeople from the CDC and the NIH are emphasizing more and more the importance of wearing masks because the major transmission of the virus is through the air. They are not recommending wearing disposable gloves unless you have a serious health issue. Washing hands and washing your reusable bags are both part of sensible cautionary behavior. And finally, some stores have said that they are concerned about a shortage of paper products. We can report that the regional director of Stop &amp; Shop said recently that there is no shortage of paper bags, nor does he expect one, according to Janine Beargetz, head of BYO Greenwich. As the council considers the future of Groton's very important ban on single-use plastics, we strongly urge you to let it go into effect on July 7th while providing some flexibility to store owners on the timing of the implementation. Sincerely, Elizabeth Reisbeck, co-chair, Groton Conservation Advocates.
Thank you, Mr. Stever. Mr. Burt, are there any other people that are signed up to speak this evening?
None signed up. I see Joni Main in the queue. I don't know... So I'm not sure if I've been able to her to speak to see if she would like to speak at this point.
Ms. Main?
Hi, I'm here. I'm all set.
You do not wish to speak, ma'am?
No, I do not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is all.
That's all? Okay. All right, so let me just take care of this. All right, so we are on to Roman numeral six, responses to citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. Councilor Franco?
I was just curious if we're going to acknowledge any of the letters we received.
We received a... Just to acknowledge them, we received quite a few letters. They will be... They have all been sent to the town council. So they've seen them all, and it will be part of the minutes, added to the minutes, so people can see online.
Did anybody request that they be read during this meeting?
No one requested that, Mayor and councilor. But I do, as Town Manager Burt stated, we do have all... There's quite a few, I would say, close to 18 correspondences. If not more, I can count them. I can count them if you'd like, but they are going to be part of the permanent record.
Can I just ask if there is a distinction between the ones that were requested by the article in the paper? Or are they all together?
You didn't read them?
No, because many of them came in today.
Oh, yeah, exactly. Most of them came in today. So most of them came in today. So I didn't see many that referred to the article, but there were many in favor and many opposed to the issue of the Noink School and then a couple of other issues.
All right. I was just curious because there is an article in the paper, and I believe I received more letters this coming week prior to us discussing this next week.
Probably.
Thank you.
We have Councilor Bordelon and Baumgartner.
Thank you. Speaking, I was going to say something similar to what Councilor Franco had stated. I feel due to the whole transparency process and true government and proper democracy, looking at the situation we're in, obviously, some people might not have registered and want to speak, but I feel the voices on those papers are just as loud and should be all read into the record. The fact that we're getting them right before is no fault of anybody. It's just a matter of time. And I think it's important while other people are publicly discussing their position on this situation, other people might have disabilities or can't attend or don't have the technology, and I think their voice should be heard. And I think that I feel that those should be read into the record. That way, the people that have opposition on this are also read. I'm not saying that that's my stance. I'm just stating that I feel for true good government, we should, just like Counselor Aubrey wanted all of the donation, that the people who donate to be read, which I think is very important. I also think we treat these people who take the time to read the letter and just not stick them into the file, which I think is great, but I think we need to give them their full time. And I do think that they should be read tonight. Please, thank you.
Well, I should hope that we would all read the letters that are received. We're going to go to Councilor Baumgartner next before we make any decisions on that.
With all due respect, some of the letters, and not to cut you off, and I apologize, Councilor Baumgartner, some of these come in at 2:00 and 3:00 o'clock. Not everybody's sitting on a device waiting for these to come through. And so if we're in possession of letters on the day of a meeting, we might have more in an email right now as we speak. That's one thing. But if we're in possession of 18 letters, if some of them are repeat, we can skip over them. But if there's some outliers, they should be read into the record. Thank you.
Councilor Bordelon, no one is arguing with you. I ask if we could go to Councilor Baumgartner next, and then we'll come back to you. Councilor Baumgartner?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, on the issue of the plastics reduction ordinance, the council recalls in approving the ordinance, we also supported a hardship variance, so inability for businesses to make their case to the town government as to why they should... As to why they should be granted a reprieve from that ordinance. So there is a process in place for those businesses to seek a reprieve from that ordinance going into effect on July 7th. So, you know, I would support businesses utilizing that avenue if they have difficulty implementing that ordinance at this time. In terms of the Noink School property, you know, it goes without saying that, you know, this is an issue that we have deliberated on almost ad nauseam. And, you know, there are folks, you know, who are very passionate about the issue, and many of them have written letters to us. And I would hope that each counselor has taken the time to read through them prior to this meeting. You know, they are a... They come... Writers come from all sides and really provide very interesting ideas as to, you know, how this council should best move forward. So, you know, again, as you all may know, I have consistently favored, designated the Noink School property as town-owned open space to be protected in perpetuity for all and future generations of residents to enjoy. You know, I was one of the counselors opposing the dissolution of the Noink School Gardens Task Force that had submitted a master plan to the town council for endorsement. And while the majority of counselors did not vote to endorse the master plan, this current council has the opportunity to champion a new vision for the property. Last week, I had asked Noink resident Brian Kent to update the plan that he initially drafted for the task force, and he was eager to do so at no cost. You know, I'm of the belief that the updated plan serves as a blueprint for the council to consider with so many competing ideas for the site. And Brian will be sharing the redesign plan with the council on June 9th at my request. And I hope everyone who's listening today will also tune into that presentation from other citizens in town as well. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Baumgartner. Councilor Heed, you're in the queue. And then Counselor Aubrey.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. In terms of the plastics ordinance, I just want to be on the record as supporting the ordinance and having it go into effect as originally planned. It's been in the paper for, you know, well over a year. The Economic Development Team, as I understand it, is in the process of reaching out to all the businesses to ensure that they're fully advised. And really, this is part of the climate crisis that we're facing. All of the plastic is generated through oil-based products. And, you know, that we've got to take care of the next major crisis that's going to be upon us or in some ways, already upon us. We also have to realize that our landfills are... We're not using landfill. We're using incinerators. But there's a possibility that those incinerators will close, and there's talk of shifting over to landfill, which, you know, as an expert on picking up trash around town, I can tell you, it's everywhere. We need to do something to stop the single-use, not just plastic, but throwaway culture, paper as well. You know, we need to move towards reuse and recycle. So all that being said, on to the... If I could take a moment and just respond to all of the letters and input I've received for the Noink School property. I appreciate all the input. We have a process that we're applying to the... I'm saying "we," but I'm kind of speaking for myself. But the previous council set up a process that this council has adopted and made a few small adjustments where we're reviewing. And actually, I guess we went beyond that because we're reviewing every excess town property to figure out what's the best use for. And, uh, what's right for one property may be right, may not be right for another property. Uh, for example, the, the knowing school property, uh, clearly is not, uh, you know, it's not in a great location for a multi-use, it's also not, in my opinion, uh, the proper, uh, good property for, uh,
Excuse me, point of order. We're supposed to be asking questions for clarifications, we're not supposed to be going on about what our thoughts are about this. That's our next meeting, if I'm correct.
This is responses to citizens petitions, you may ask questions to citizens petitions.
Questions for clarification.
All right, point, point taken, if we could try to, um, restrict our remarks, uh, brief, direct responses to, um, the citizens, please. Counselor Heed, did you wish to finish?
Counselor, Counselor O'Bree, you made him go back into his shell.
Counselor Heed, did you wish to finish?
Sorry, I upset him.
I have nothing else to say.
Thank you. Counselor O'Bree, you had your hand up?
I just wanted to ask, uh, one question, uh, uh, at our next meeting, when we do discuss this, will the planner be there to share with us his information?
Yes.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Bird, there are quite a few people that will be present, we can talk about that, um, later on, I'm, I'm trying to get through everyone, having a chance to respond to any of the citizens
That's, that's all I can ask.
before we, um, take a consensus on the letters or not, so, um, do any other councillors wish to respond? Counselor Bordelain, I do see you, but I'm trying to give other people the chance to speak as well. Um, do any other councillors wish to respond?
Point of order. Um, I spoke in support of having the letters
Counselor Bordelain.
Point of order, let me speak. I did not respond to citizens' comments, I was defending the fact that the letter should be read. So I have not spoken yet.
Right, so I'm gonna give every people a chance who have not spoken yet, if they would like to speak. So do any other councillors wish to speak at this point? Okay, so at this point, the intention was to ask if there's consensus to have the letters read into the record. And if there is consensus to have the letters read into the record, including the emails, I would ask the clerk to do so, please. So do we have consensus to read those letters into the record?
May I have, may I speak to that?
Um, I have, I see one hand in favor, two, obviously two, Counselor Bordelain wishes that. Are there other councillors who wish to have those read? Councillors of Perry? I see three hands so far. Okay, that is not a majority, they, they are entered into the record. Um, Counselor Bordelain, did you wish to add something else?
Um, I also would like to state on a, a defensive position on myself. When I, when I stated that these should be read, they're just as important to be read to the record for everyone to hear, just like we heard everybody else. For me to adequately respond to citizens' comments, I need to hear all the citizens. Therefore, they should be read. I also do not appreciate, Madam Mayor, saying to me, no one's arguing with you. Using words like that, I'm not arguing, I'm defending my position, and I have a right to do such. So I ask that you please not use words like arguing, which I find defensive, especially what's, what's going on in this world. I talk the way that I talk, I'm very passionate, and I will not be told that I'm arguing. I'm passionate and I'm defending. Thank you, and that's what I was elected to do.
Thank you for that. Um, I see no other hands, so at that point, Counselor Franco, do you have something else in response to citizens?
I would just like to speak on the topic of the letters. Um, like, I, I plan to read all of the letters, though I worked until before, prior to this meeting, basically. And I also believe that because we're doing this now in a teleconference way, and yes, it may take more time, but I believe that the letters should be read and our citizens should be heard in our meetings, and, um, this is the forum for that. I mean, they don't have an opportunity to just show up at our meetings and stand at the podium and speak for five minutes and let us hear. I mean, we could be sitting at the town council annex, right, you know, up at the annex, and the room could be packed now, and we would, we don't have that feeling or understanding of really what's going, what's going on, and I think it would be, it would behoove us to read these letters for the record, and not everybody is going to go back, I mean, the councillors will, I will definitely be going back and checking my emails now, tonight, and reading them all. But the, the community at large will not go back and review our agenda packet and see all the letters, so I just thought that should be said, and I think we should hear what our citizens have to say. Thank you.
So I, Counselor O'Bree has her hand up again. Yes, Counselor O'Bree?
If I could just ask a question, if we were there and we were all together and we were having a regular meeting, would we be reading the letters that we had gotten, or would we be listening to the people that wanted to speak? Uh, if these people had wanted to speak, we would have listened to them, we will read the letters, but I don't think that we're doing anything any differently than we would for a regular meeting.
Thank you, and I will ask one more time, is there a change, is there consensus to read the letters into the record? Raise your hands, please, if you would like to read the letters into the record. Once again, I see three hands. Um, so we don't have consensus to do so. Counselor Bordelain has her hand up again. Counselor Bordelain, do you have another remark to citizens' petitions, please?
Um, just because we haven't done it in the past doesn't mean that it's right. Look at our country now, look at all the things that we haven't done right. It's important that maybe if we're noted, if we're noticing a change or a way to deliberately make sure that people's voices are being heard, which is a concern in our community as we speak today on many levels, from COVID to racial inequality, to access to government, it's, it's police brutality, it's important that if we say that people can submit letters, that, that on this night, if just like everyone else had the chance to speak, that those letters are part of the record and are, they can be summarized, they don't have to be word for word, but give those people a voice. I encourage councillors to raise their hand and support this.
I will ask once again, how many would like to have letters read into the record? This is the third time I'm asking. Um, and how many hands are there? I see three hands, that is not consensus. Um, Madam Clerk, you have your hand up, is there something you wish to say? Otherwise, we have to move on to the next item on the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, you're muted.
And, and I think that we ought to raise the question of FOI, when it, when it comes to letters that we receive, FOI states that you have to acknowledge who gave, wrote a letter, we don't have to read the entire letter, but we should say who the letters were from.
Would you like to read who the letters were from, Madam Clerk?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Would you like to do that now, or, or is there more?
Yes, please, if you could just give us the names, um, who wrote in, please.
Right, okay, we received letters from Pat Doyle, fifteen Elm Street, Jim Hudson, twenty-nine River, uh, Hillside Avenue, Robin Thomas, twenty-four Westview Avenue, Sarah Fornier, a Hillman from, uh, a knowing resident, no, no actual, uh, address, um, Jennifer Lane, um, no address, uh, Ed, Edinger from Mystic, no address, Vicky Preston and Greg Lou from, from their iPad, no address, uh, but they live in knowing. Um, Alexa Dutton from Pros, uh, one oh eight Prospect Hills Road, um, Allison and, uh, and Kylie, uh, Nason, Allison Kylie Nason from, from the Daniel Packard Inn. What name, oh, this is, uh, Liz Rayzbeck's statement she gave this evening. Uh, Jesse Stratton from thirty-one Spring Street, uh, Jill Kowiski and Becky Carlson, they were here this evening. And she has quite a few points. Uh, Lisa Butler, um, from, uh, from knowing. Margie Gukins, uh, twenty-eight, uh, excuse me, twenty-six Daniel Brown Drive, Yolanda Cooley from knowing, Anne Wilkinson from Mystic, Jason Hillman from knowing. Uh, I already said Pat Doyle. Uh, that's it, that's it. I did get more, but they were received after, uh, uh, close of business, so I can't report on those.
Correct, and they are all entered into the minutes of the meeting and are available for the public to read.
That's right.
Bordelain, I don't know if your hand is new or if that was there from prior.
No, but it's new, um, can we see if we have a consensus to eat, at least put into the record orally, um, what their positions were in those letters, at least for or against, or any of that, um, just?
That would require me to read the letters, I didn't read the letters.
That's correct, so this will be the fourth, the fourth time, um, is there consensus to read the letter into the record?
Forward, can this be a referral to the Rules Committee, or is that the next step I'd have to take?
That's perfectly fine, if you'd like that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, we are on to the consent calendar. Um, Counselor Franco, do you have another response to citizens' petitions?
I'd just like to ask if these are the letters that were also received by Ms. Hilton as well.
Yes, these are exactly the letters that Ms. Hilton received.
Thank you.
Thank you, so we are on to Roman numeral seven, consent calendar, and we will start at the end of the table with Counselor Bum Gardner, if you'd like to move the consent calendar, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Bordelain, second.
Moved by Bum Gardner, seconded by Bordelain. And, um, Counselor O'Bree, would you like to read the contributions, the special trust fund contributions, excuse me?
Um, I don't think I have them.
Councillors of Perry, do you have it handy? I know you were interested in that the last time you read them for us.
You have them, but I have to show them.
Madam Clerk, would you like to read them, please?
I apologize.
That's okay.
Are you, you are teasing me, right?
Shall I go ahead, Patrice?
Yes.
He has them.
Thank you, Councillors of Perry.
Shelley Chapman, Alpha Delta, uh, Connecticut Zeta Chapter. Uh, that's pardon me, Alpha Delta Kappa, Connecticut Zeta Chapter. Joan Feeney, Sheila Fuller, Elizabeth Hogan, Peggy Nettles, Phyllis My- Meyer, The Union Baptist Church, Three Rs Company, Anonymous, very substantial donor from Anonymous, Robert Ashworth, Adele Barclay, uh, Todd and Patricia Brown, Leo and Catherine Gibson, Lawrence Johnson, Constance Miller, James and Marguerite Mitchell, Margaret Russell, Maddie Veered and Kathy, Kathleen Warlock. These people have made donations largely to social service discretionary funds, but to town departments, uh, in addition to their taxes, it's a spirit of giving, it's a spirit of loving, uh, and taking care of our neighbors. Uh, I think we should, uh, we should recognize them and applaud them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillors of Perry, and you did just that, thank you very much. Um, so councillors, do you have any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, we will vote on the consent calendar, all those in favor, please say aye.
I'm sorry, my apologies, I have one correction.
Oh, yes, go ahead, I can't, I can't see you, Counselor Heed, so.
It's okay, it's, uh, page three of the minutes, uh, under number, Roman numeral number six, responses to citizens' petitions. Uh, it starts with me and it goes in, it, it was like a, a huge story. Uh, basically, the last sentence doesn't make sense, I, rather than go back and see what I was saying, I would suggest just striking it.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, are you set with that?
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, I will call for a vote on the consent calendar, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously, thank you. We are on to communications and reports, um, and we will start with the councillors. So we will go with, um, Counselor Bordelain.
Are we going out of order tonight?
I'm doing it alphabetically, that way I don't skip anybody inadvertently.
I just wanted to make sure, just checking for the change, because sometimes we go other ways, and now we're doing it different, thank you. Um, I'll, I'll pass, because I wasn't ready, actually, so thank you.
Counselor Bum Gardner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I, so, in the last week, um, we've seen our country go through significant turmoil, um, in the aftermath of George Floyd, um, George Floyd's murder, um, by a rogue officer. And, um, I would remind everyone, uh, on the council that, um, there are, um, many folks on the council and, and folks within our community who are hurting, uh, in the aftermath of, um, it was a disgusting act. Um, young people are rising up to speak out against, um, police brutality, and, um, we have been very lucky and fortunate, in my experience in, in, uh, the town, in the city of Groton, uh, to have, uh, come across officers that, um, are kind and gracious to, uh, African Americans within our community. Um, my brother, uh, who is on the autism spectrum, has had quite a few run-ins with our, uh, city police officers. And, um, in each, uh, instance, um, they've treated him with respect and humility. And, um, I think, uh, many police officers throughout, uh, our state and our country could certainly, um, heed, heed some of that advice. Um, so I, um, you know, encourage all of us to continue having conversations about race, about, uh, engaging our, um, police departments and, uh, having civil discussions about how we can improve our, um, uh, relationships between, um, one another, because, um, more, now more than ever, uh, we need to have each other's backs. Um, and excessive use of force and, um, you treating people as if they're animals is, uh, has no place in our community. Um, so with that, I ask that, um, we, all of us engage in a very, very brief moment of silence, um, just to recognize, um, those who, um, are, um, suffering at, at this time in, um, solidarity with, uh, Black Lives Matter. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Bum Gardner, very well said. Um, Counselor Franco.
Thank you, I, uh, there will be a march for Black Lives Matter this Sunday on June seventh, it will be, it'll begin at Quonah Plains at One Central Avenue, and it will go down, I guess, Route one and turn, I think it's Rainville, and go into the City Municipal Building, and that starts at twelve o'clock, if anybody's interested, and
I'm sorry, could, I'm sorry, could I just add to that, it's going down, I believe it's going down Route one, then turning on to Meridian Street.
Oh, Meridian, excuse me, thank you for the correction. Um, so I just wanted to share that, and I do plan on attending and marching with my community, and I second everything that Mr. Bum Gardner had said, Counselor Bum Gardner, and I am appalled at the way people are treated in our country, and I would like to go out and support and march with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Heed.
Thank you, um, goes without saying that the, uh, things that have happened the past week are pretty reprehensible. Um, and I do support the, the protestors. Um, so to report on Monday night, I attended the Conservation Commission meeting, uh, Counselor Bum Gardner was there as well. Uh, they had a long agenda, um, and, uh, several items on that agenda, um, that, uh, the, the meeting went on for a very long time. Uh, but there was a substantial amount about climate change, particularly at the beginning, and looking at, uh, areas that will be impacted, uh, in identifying, uh, properties that in the future will be, uh, you know, the, the future marches, fu- future marshes and other areas that need to be protected or, um, or, um, you know, that may be at risk. Uh, so in addition to several other items, they were also working on an up, on updating the conservation plan. I believe I reported that out a few weeks ago, uh, but it is still on target, uh, they're still working on it, so, thank you.
And we are on to Counselor Melendez, please.
Yes, I'd just like to second everything Counselor Bum Gardner said, uh, he's a much more eloquent speaker than I, so I'll just, um, leave it there, um, I, I would, I am going to participate in the, uh, in the protest, um, this Sunday, and I hope to see a whole, a lot of people And I hope to see a whole, a lot of people there. Um, I think we're blessed to have the police department that we do in this town, but I think it's still important to, um, show, uh, solidarity to other towns who aren't as fortunate as us.
Thank you, Councilor Melendez. Uh, Councilor Obray.
I just want to say that what has been said is felt by all of us, I think. I, I feel badly, I, I really can't walk with you, because I would be dead at the end, but I'll be there at the end. And I hope we can all be patient with each other, love each other, and try to understand the feelings of each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Obray. Um, Councilor Parker.
It has been a rough week. And thank you, Councilor Baumgartner, and thank you all. It's, it's gonna take time to heal. And the most important thing to have is communication, not only communication, but to listen. Not to listen to talk, but listen to hear what needs to be done. And I'd like to thank our police departments, because we do have three in Groton, for supporting our, for our communities. And we do have to give them a shout out. And for the young people who are putting this on together, thank you for your initiative. And it's been a rough week. And I just pray for healing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Parker. Um, Councilors of Perry.
I echo the sentiments of, uh, people who've spoken before me on the issue of this terrible murder of George Floyd in Minnesota. I think that it goes beyond Black Lives Matter. I think it goes into our hearts where hatred creeps in. And hatred without sense. And usually hatred without a reason comes from our own, uh, our own failings. Uh, we should look into ourselves and we should eradicate the hatred that is there. It's too easy to hate people who are of different color. It's a whole class, but you can say, we're against them and they're against us. You have to have a reason for, uh, such disregard of human rights. And, uh, the reason isn't there. And it, there is no reason for the hatred. And I think it's, uh, it's thrown upon us as the community leaders, and, uh, it's thrown upon teachers and parents, to teach people that the, uh, there is no excuse for that kind of hatred. Uh, and we have to look into ourselves and see what's wrong with us, that we have to find someone else and artificially make that someone else a lesser being than we are. I hope that the country can rest. I am grateful that Groton has not had violence erupt. I think that there's ample ill feeling. And, uh, I, I hope that we can all look at this and try to, uh, try to make ourselves better. But until we look at the issue of hatred itself, we're not going to eradicate this problem.
Thank you, Councilors of Perry. Councilor Bordelone, we're back to you.
Thank you. Um, I just want to second everything that, uh, Councilor Baumgartner stated, as well as other fellow councilors. I too feel it was a tough week, having to explain to two, um, minority, um, sons of mine what is going on and watching it on TV. And, and, you know, the fear of when my son got his, you know, work on getting his license, telling him how he has to operate a vehicle. That's not something that I, as a mother, I should have to train my son to do. But unfortunately, that's the reality that I face here in this house. Being judged for things that shouldn't matter, but still matter today. And yet some people still feel that everyone is equal. One of the reasons I got involved in politics is to have representation that looked like me. Growing up in this town, I barely would see teachers, municipal workers, council members, staff, clerks, police officers, that resembled anything other than the, the majority. And with our demographics here in Groton, we have work to do. I brought it up several times, asking, are we doing the minority recruiting? And we get answers, and they say, well, you know, they're not been hiring. We can do better. The, the school district can do better, the town can do better. I can sit here and, and say, as a black female, how sad I am every day and how the pressure for my own two boys is. But until we make change, change starts in the town, hiring and employ, and employ, employ, employing people that look like the demographics, demographics in which that the town itself serves. That's when we'll have equality. Making sure that we have the one-to-one cameras in this town. Do we have a one-to-one camera initiative yet? Are they full operational? In some towns, it's even the right to turn it on. Some towns have a discretion if the cops should turn theirs on. As a town, do we feel, if, I don't know today, but should we say that they always should be on? Do all of our officers have cameras? Just because Groton has not had a reported incident recently, doesn't mean it hasn't happened here. Or in the city, I hope that it hasn't. But the reason that we're seeing more of this now is because of the fact that people have cameras. So I encourage the town, and as an elected official myself, what can we do better? It's not just the walk in the, in the streets, it's the action from the streets in which we use on a daily basis to, you know, be elected and be, become elected and get involved and vote and, 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 and act change. That's when change happens. It, it, it's not just the walk down the street like my son said. It's, it's the judgment as a whole. When my son looked at me and said, Mom, I identify as being black, but I look more Puerto Rican because I'm biracial. Don't worry about me being arrested for that. Worry about me being deported. Now, that, that, that made me think for a minute. Wow, he was more concerned about being called an illegal. People ask him all the time what language he speaks. People want to take everyone and put them in a box and, and have to identify, are you black, are you white? In this district, my son started kindergarten over sixteen, June, eleven years ago, at Mary Morrison. And when we walked in there that day, I was stunned. I never had to worry about it, I always filled out black, right? Go into the school and they said, you only, I, I circled both races. And they said, oh, I'm sorry, ma'am, um, state minimum reporting, you have to choose one. I said, choosing one denies him of the other race. Well, that's the only form we have from the state. I wrote a letter to the paper, I got involved. I said, identifying him as one is not fair, you're denying the other parents. So if I, so if his father brought him in, he'd be white. So if I bring him, then you're going to put black. So that's where change has to start. That form has changed. They have Pacific Islander now. They have other options. You can choose more than one, you can self-identify. Those are changes that, that, that need to come. But our children growing up in this town need more people that look and represent the diversity that's truly in this town and the demographics in which we serve. Until we get there, that's when I will feel a lot more comfortable. Because that's when the respect, when, when, when children have a chance to see teachers. My son's never had a minority teacher in the, in the town of Groton, not a person of color. I had one in Groton, Mrs. Williams, I'll never forget her name. It shouldn't be like that, but it is. So I, I challenged the council and, and the town and, and, and the town officials to, to really look at how we are gonna really truly make that change. And I will be out there marching. I was at the New London, um, affair on Saturday, uh, and I attended the Rise Up today. Rise Up will be out, um, on the corner by the flagpole, um, every day from 12 to 1. It's peaceful, people are holding signs. And I encourage people to get involved. And it also takes for people to speak up. When you hear someone say something, it's, sometimes it's just a, a joke, it's not funny. People have to speak up and hold people accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Bordelone. Um, I echo the sentiments of, um, Councilors of Perry and Councilor Baumgartner. You know, as a teacher with, um, a very diverse student body, it's very difficult. And especially at this time when you can't be in the classroom with them to help them through this. So, um, we will be there, um, on Sunday. And we hope that, um, a good cross-section of the town turns out to show support. And to offer encouragement. And I'd like to, um, we're gonna have Chief Fasaro speak in a minute. But, um, thank the police force. I read a very eloquent post by, um, Councilor Carter today. I, if you haven't seen it, I would take a look at it. He's very, very thoughtful and very well spoken. And I thanked him for, um, writing that post and sharing it with the public. Okay, so I actually have a report from, um, a meeting I attended. Just kind of a hard shift, a gear shift here. I attended the Gulf Advisory Board on Monday, and, um, things are going well. They have extra Rangers that they brought on to take care of the COVID-19 situation and sanitizing carts, taking care of, um, social distancing option, options. And things are going well at the course, which is a positive thing, um, to point out. Uh, let's see, we've had outreach from the community. Citizens reaching out and asking what, you know, what kinds of things are we doing? How can they get involved? And I've tried to be responsive to them, um, to guide them in the right direction. Clerk of the representative town meeting. Madam Clerk? You're muted. There you go.
Yeah, it's, sometimes it's slow, you click, but it's slow. Uh, the RTM, um, has a, a meeting scheduled next Wednesday, that would be the 10th of June. And, uh, they, they, uh, they may or may not have any actual business, but you know the RTM, they will find some business. Otherwise, uh, they're, they're all, well, we do have a, uh, one vacancy still in District, uh, District 3. So hopefully we can, that's a new, that's new. Uh, Mr. Salva moved. So you can't serve if you move out of town. And so we appreciate, uh, we appreciated his, uh, his, uh, participation. He was a valuable member. Um, but we're looking for, um, um, a Republican to, to, to take his place. Candidates, uh, may contact, um, the Republican Town Chair, uh, or they can contact, contact my office, we'll direct them.
Thank you. Clerk of the council.
Uh, you have all the correspondences that, uh, I received, um, plus other things. I'm sure that, but I want to tell you that, that our office is working very, very hard. Uh, it's, it's very busy. Um, I do want to remind the council that, you know, our, our conveyance tax even has, is lower. Our, our conveyance fees is, is half of what it used to be. So, you know, the revenues will be less, even though we're still just as busy and there's things happening, absolutely. But the money is not going to be as, as heavy as it was last year, going forward since September. Uh, we can pretty much say that we have, haven't sold very much at all in, in, in very many licenses. So dog licensing just started, uh, yesterday, um, and we're, that's an extension, uh, for late payments. If, it, normally, you have an entire month of June to register your dog, um, without incurring a late payment. And the governor, um, issued a, a, uh, a, an executive order to extend the late payment. So to start in September, so, well, month of July, you won't pay. So August 1st, you'll pay a late fee if you don't register in June. Doesn't make sense to me, but it does to the governor. So please register your dog. You, you, I, I assume everyone knows how to register a dog, but in case you don't, uh, we'll need to see proof of rabies. Uh, if it, you know, the, and, uh, if the dog's been altered, spayed, or neutered. That's an $8 fee for neutered or spayed dogs, and $19 if they're not. Uh, August 11th is the new primary, just to let you know. As I reported at the last meeting, uh, you will be receiving an absentee ballot application, uh, whether you want to vote by absentee ballot or not. Uh, you're encouraged to make your own decision. No pressure. Okay. Any questions, please contact my office. That's about it.
Thank you. Um, Councilor Bordelone, do you have a question for the clerk?
Yeah, I just had a question. Will the absentee ballot be in dual language?
Yes, it's always in dual language. The front side, uh, what's the front? The front looks the same on both sides. So one side is Spanish, uh, and one side is English. We don't have ballots in any other language, um, that go out, but they are available in other languages through the Secretary of State's office.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Town manager.
Good evening. Uh, first to mention, I also support the protestors, um, and, uh, wish them well. Wish everybody, it joins well this weekend. Um, most council members probably know, but the public don't know that we, the town itself, government, has a D E I committee, a Diversity Equity, Diversity Equity Inclusiveness Committee, that we're working on going more broad with. Um, and as we know, we funded a project to do more of a town-wide, um, discussion, um, upcoming. So you should, you'll, you can expect to hear more as these efforts progress soon. If you look at your packets, the page numbering is back, so, um, Joe and others, I heard you loud and clear, the page numbers are there. And then, um, if you notice on, uh, page 21, just to point out, is the first time we've included the open agenda items. Please let me know if you like the format generally, if you want any changes, um, and we can do that. We have the next business outreach, we did that first business outreach a couple of weeks ago. The next one is on Monday, June 8th at 10:00 AM. Um, as far as I know, Mayor, are you available to do the opening comments?
Yes, briefly.
Okay, um, but that will be the, again, Monday, June 8th at 10:00 AM. Uh, just to note on the middle school, we still are on schedule, substantial completion by the end of this month, and it will open in September. And all schools are in budget right now, there's nothing over budget. And that is all I have.
Okay, um, Mr. Bird, I have the superintendent's report to read, but is Chief Fasaro online that he wished to speak at this point?
He is, let me, uh, one sec here.
Thank you.
Okay, he should be, uh, a sec ago.
Chief, thank you for joining us this evening. You have the floor, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. Well, I, I understood the, uh, the council had some questions and certainly wanted to know what we've been doing. Uh, I would concur, it's been, it's been a rough week. Um, you know, I know the sentiments that many of you shared, we share as well. Uh, you probably read a post that we put out on Facebook earlier this week. You know, we do believe and subscribe to fair and impartial policing. What happened in Minneapolis should not have happened, uh, but it did. And, and that's, I think, given us in the law enforcement community an opportunity to reflect on it, to see what we can do better. But I, I heard someone say it earlier, that we need to listen, and, and I'm listening, and our officers are listening. Our officers are dismayed by what happened because it reflects poorly upon them. And it shouldn't, because they do a good job. And, and they're proud of their profession, they're proud of what they do, they're proud of the community they serve in. But nevertheless, that, uh, you know, we've seen this, this distress among, uh, community members across the country result in protests that, that in some cases have gone well beyond protests and into, into riots. We certainly don't want to see that. We want to protect people's rights to express how they feel and assemble and, and voice what they, uh, what they're feeling. But, but we don't want to see it go overboard. But I, we took a lot of time crafting that message the other day. When I say we, you know, I sat down at, uh, at this computer and rode for a while, and I collaborated with many of our senior leaders here in the department to get a message out that we thought resonated with the community and reflected what our values are and what's important to us, not just as police officers, but as human beings that witnessed the same thing you guys saw. You know, some of the things that we've done, uh, is, is try to outreach, make that outreach to the community. We've, we've, in the last couple of years, reinvigorated our community policing program because a police department that doesn't engage with their community and doesn't understand the needs of it is bound to be, uh, in, in the position that, you know, I dares to say Minneapolis is, and Ferguson was years ago. If they don't have the pulse on the finger of the community, they can't, they can't relate to those community members and people that they serve, then, then they're bound to have problems. We don't want that here. And, and I appreciate the fact that the council has supported that. And we've, we've, uh, not got exactly what I want for a community policing program, but we're on the move there to, to, to have one that's engaged, um, and, and committed people that are involved in it. What I mean, we don't, we don't have what we, what I would want is, I would want every officer, uh, to be exclusively dedicated solely to community policing. But we, we just can't do that. You know, we, we have, uh, the staff that we have, and we're trying to be responsible with that. Um, I'm happy to answer questions. I'm happy to answer questions. I, I can tell you my, um, well, I hate to say this, in, in, in three decades, not full decades, but I'm in, in my third decade of law enforcement here. This is probably the most troubling period I've seen. And, and this can be a difficult job on a good day. But certainly when you're faced with these obstacles and you, and you see what happened and, and fall victim to the fact that um, poor decisions, poor actions, criminal actions on the part of one officer has resounded across the country because it's not just one thing, right? There's, there's, people are voicing their opinion of things that they've seen. And I can tell you on behalf of this department and our officers and, and staff and dispatchers and civilians, we're, we certainly are attuned to that and want to make sure that we do everything that we can to make this department better. I'm proud of this department. I'm proud of our officers. I'm, I'm proud of the community that we serve in. But that doesn't mean there isn't room for improvement because in any organization, there's constantly a need for improvement. And that's our goal. And uh, right now, we're trying to listen to what the community says and what people feel and uh, and respect that and understand that uh, that those, those opinions and those uh, sentiments are, are important to listen to when you're in our positions. So I'll, I'll, uh, you know, I, I expected you to just make a little bit of an opening comment and certainly field any questions. There was a comment before I heard from one of the counselors talking about body cameras. We've had body cameras now for going on three years. We, I'm proud of the fact that this department was the first one in southeastern Connecticut to have it. I, I went to your predecessors and discussed it and it was supported. I will tell you that it, uh, it does many of those things that we're talking about today. It increases accountability. It demonstrates transparency. It protects the public and it protects our officers. I've said it uh, at least twice today in other forums that getting body cameras was probably not the most popular internal decision I've made, but I knew at the time it was the right decision and it's been bolstered by what's happened in the past. Certainly in the past week and certainly in the last past two and a half years. When, when, when our officers interact with people, it's documented. I don't know if you can see it. Everybody from myself on down has one. When we engage in a public interaction, we utilize them. But, but we're, we're still in, in one of the, one of the things I think you're gonna see changing in the near future is we're one of the few departments that does have them right now. I think that will change in the short term. I think people um, are gonna insist upon it and I think departments are gonna recognize the value of it. But having said that, I, I don't know, Mayor, if, if you have any questions for me or if any of the counselors, I'd, I'd be happy to entertain those and, and try and address any of your concerns.
Thank you, Chief, for, for coming this evening and for speaking. We have two counselors who have their hands up right now. We have Counselors of Perry first, please.
Chief, I, I, I want to say first that I'm proud of the Police Department in the town of Groton. I think that you've done an excellent job. I, I, I also think that most policemen throughout the country live up to the motto of protect and serve. And they are doing the right thing just about all of the time. The problem is that there are outliers. It's kind of like driving on the road and everybody is driving in line. It's a crowded highway. But someone thinks they're more important and they weave in and out of traffic, exposing the rest of the drivers to exceptional risk. If there were a way to identify those drivers and remove them from the road, the rest of us would be a lot safer. When it comes to police officers, we should be looking for things like membership in a white supremacy's organization. Any white supremacy organization, not just the Ku Klux Klan. We should be looking for things like prior behavior with people of other races. And that should be dealt with very strongly. And if it continues, the officer, I think, should be removed. And we should be specifically training about race relations. I, I don't know. I, I hope that you're doing those things, but I would like to see us not have the kind of uh, activity by any one of our officers that has occurred in Minnesota. I'm sure the chief from Minneapolis didn't hire that guy knowing that he was a, he was an out, he was a bad apple. But they did have prior experience with him as using excessive force on other occasions. I, 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 I just, the other thing I hope is that the police will show sympathy for the, the people who march and will show some uh, concurrent, some, some uh, actual gesture of agreement with the issue that they're raising. Those are my only thoughts. Once again, I'm proud of our Police Department. You know, you, I lost you on my viewer here. And uh, I hope we can, oh, there you are. I hope that we can, uh, we can uh, continue with something of an unblemished record.
I, I agree with everything you said. And we do support, um, as you indicated, the, the protests. In fact, it hurts us probably more than anybody else because uh, we know, you know, in any organization, in any, any group, there's bound to be someone who's a bad actor. We want more than anyone else to root that out. We try to identify that during our selection process. In fact, right now, one of the things that I directed shortly before this, a couple of weeks ago, is to revamp our entire background investigation process for people that are in this department. I thought it needed to be more comprehensive. Some of the things that you've spoken about are things that we, um, we look for, but we need to do a better job of looking for. And that's one of the goals. And, and that was assigned to, to officers within this department to, to provide me with a better idea of what we're getting for the caliber of applicants and to make sure that we're hiring people, that we have vetted them to the best degree that we can. Just, just so that you do understand, when, when we hire an officer, there are several steps uh, that they have to go through, which, some of which are unique to Connecticut. You have to undergo a written and psychological exam. You have to undergo a polygraph exam, which is a lie detector. And many states don't do that. We do that. And in fact, that is a great differentiator between uh, people that we bring into the, into the profession and those that we don't. Because it gives us a better understanding of how they think. And maybe some of the things that they've done in their past that they would prefer not to be known. And, and it gives us a, a, a greater depth of knowledge on the caliber of people we're getting. So I think Connecticut law enforcement as a whole does a better job on that. I can't speak to whether they do that in Minnesota or not. I know some of our adjoining state to the north, the northeast, northeast do not do that. But I think that is a helpful tool for us, particularly the administrators that have to decide whether to hire someone or not. Another point you brought up is we, we have trained our department in fair and impartial policing. And that is, I think, what you're gonna see as a result of this is that, that is going to be uh, one of the standards that's required universally in Connecticut law enforcement. We've had that training here. Our officers have gone, undergone it. What you may know, um, you know, this is such a serious topic with our department, with me is, is I'm one of the police chiefs, one of only two police chiefs in the state of Connecticut that sit on the racial profiling board as a full member of it. So it, it's something that we do take serious. You know, I, I, I use this phrase, I give my father credit for using it, but I believe he got it from Joe Friday from the, from the 60s TV cop show. The problem with police officers is we get our people from the human race. So sometimes people do slip through the cracks. People do, um, whether it's intentional or in the heat of the moment, make bad decisions and do the wrong thing. But I, I think our job collectively as an, as a profession and certainly in this organization is to make sure if we have that, we do everything we can to root it out, to identify it, make sure it doesn't exist. And then if people are, have a propensity to be um, use excessive force or to, that just harbor resentment against citizens for no, no reason that's, that, that, that is logical or is, 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 is necessary, that they shouldn't be a part of this. That, you know, they, they, we have to have people that have, you know, the ultimate goal of helping one another. And that's what law enforcement really is supposed to be. Police work is supposed to be to help people. We, we go to people when they're in the times of trouble, in the worst times of their life, and we're supposed to bring chaos out of that order. And usually it's a stressful situation for the people that get involved. So we want to make sure officers are empathetic and sympathetic and, and understand that and, and do everything they can to make sure that when they're brought to resolve a situation, they do it in the best way possible. With, hopefully with not using force, which, which commonly is the result, that there is no force, that there is no need for that. But from time to time, it does happen.
Thank you, Chief. We have Counselor Borland and Bum Gardner.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out and uh, today to speak. I appreciate you collaborating and, and being involved. One of the things I think that's the most important and is having community policing, having officers on the ground in districts where there might be areas where they could have accessibility. It, it's unfortunate that something like this then spikes the whole, oh, yep, we're, we're, we're doing this right or that right. It's, people are angry not just for that one incident. There are still people that are uncharged on, on all levels. I hope that in our, in our town, that officers who are seeing, it's not just the officer who's actually engaging and committing the crime. It's the bystanders who allow it and push it under the rug and don't speak up. And so I'm hoping that in this town, there's an initiative to really train and speak to how one, when you have someone else who's an authority figure and the other guys around them are allowing it to happen, even though they're not touching anything, but they're just standing there. I think it's really important to have more community involvement with our youth, our minority youth. Really looking at a way to bridge that gap in this town, not just under times of stress. I, I encourage our town to find a way um, to really bring back that community policing mo, uh, model. Really looking at things at the high school, like um, a very diverse school, again, that has very little accessibility in minorities. Really looking at minority officers and using them adequately in the town to really serve where they could be served. And I mean minority from black to, to Spanish, to all, all backgrounds. Not only just my, my race, but uh, uh, gender. There's no female officer at the high school. These are things in the town that people need. I know it costs money, but you know, it's important that we have the accessibility. I know that we have the one, the camera initiative. Is that something where every engagement in this town that the camera is always on? And when is that split decision determine when the camera should be on or not? Is that, because I know that's, that's a district uh, that's, you know, driven by the individual town.
No, very simply, there's a statewide policy. We took, we took funding from the state of Connecticut to, to uh, purchase these body worn cameras. And in order to do that, we had to adopt the state policy. And if you get online, you can find it at the Police Officer Standards and Training Council's website. You will see that uh, many of the things I mentioned are identified in that policy. Transparency, police accountability, protecting officers. Those are all outlined in that. As far as when they use it, public interactions. If I go, if I am on duty and I leave to go get a cup of coffee and I decide to go to Starbucks and, and walk in or Dunkin' Donuts or one of the other places, my body camera goes on. It's on, it's recording. If there's no notable incident, then it, you know, it doesn't download. But if I have a public interaction, uh, if I make an arrest, if I conduct a traffic stop, if I go to a domestic violence incident, if um, all of those things are captured on body worn cameras and, and that complies with that policy. So there's no, you know, there's no secret wink, wink, nod, nod, we're gonna turn it off. That doesn't happen. In fact, uh, you know, sometimes officers record things inadvertently that, that they're, they didn't intend to. You know, they, we have a policy that says when you come into the building, you shut it off. And, and that's to make sure that we, you know, don't record things that don't need to be recorded. For instance, when people are, you know, eating lunch and things of that nature, that those are, those are times when it's shut off. But the public interactions, when there's a police activity going on, it is recorded.
So my last piece-
Does that, does that answer your question?
That answers it. My last piece to that is um, just making sure that we are coming up with a plan of some initiatives to, to bridge those gaps and really work on working with our youth, starting with our kids younger and, and the community um, to, to build that relationship. I mean, because, you know, I, I, I sat on a seminar the other day with a few officers out west and, and, and a youth uh, minority council where they were talking and the youth spoke out. And now the fear of being pulled over. A 17-year-old, you know? They tell women that, you know, you can keep going and be pulled over to a spot where you feel comfortable with his lighting, right? You know, what about a minority youth or, 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 or female who doesn't feel comfortable right now? You know, right now, to underst, you have to understand the process that, oh, you know, you walk up to a car, someone looks nervous. Well, yeah, they're nervous. They're not up to anything bad, but you can be nervous just by the presentation of a cop. Understanding the population when, when presented, you know? And, and, and to, to not, you know, think that there's necessarily something going on. That's, it's, it's the judgment. And, and I think in this town, I think we, we, we are doing great things. But I would like to see more initiative working with the youth. You know, to help uh, minority teens and um, officers to, to have a plan to uh, integrate into the community um, in a positive manner, not just, you know, when something bad happens. We, we need to look at this from, from a whole town perspective. When things are good and, and, and things are, are running smoothly, we should be then keeping that, that way and, and not waiting until something bad and then rising up. You know, being more proactive versus reactive. And um, I thank you for your time and, you know, I, I have a lot of respect for law enforcement myself. And I understand that in the hiring process, just like good teachers, bad teachers, good doctors, good nurses, they're everywhere. But when it happens, it's, it's hard in a place of power. And when you give someone a badge and a gun and you tell them that they can do certain things, that's when the dynamic changes. And when this happens, that's why the impact is so powerful. Because it, the trust that's entrusted in, in the force. But I do thank you and I encourage community policing and, and, and really, you know, getting to the root of the problem and bu, uh, building those, um, breaking down those barriers um, in this community. Thank you.
I, I appreciate all that and I agree with that. And you, you hit a, you hit a, hit the nail on the head with one thing there. It's a public trust. That's the only thing we have in law enforcement. We do give a lot of authority to our police officers. They, we are the public face of government. You are government, we are government, but people recognize immediately, immediately because we are out there every day. We're in marked cruisers, we're in uniforms. We have the authority of the badge of our office. We, we represent the, the, the community that we serve. So we are the public face of government. So there is a lot of trust that are put in our, our police officers. And that's why it's so important for us to vet our people so thoroughly to make sure that we get the best people in this profession. And, and like we talked about before, if we have people that aren't suitable for it, we get rid of them. I, I couldn't agree more. And, and certainly the fact that, you know, we put a lot of trust in our teachers and our doctors and our lawyers and all these other professionals. But in police officers, a little bit different because we give an officer a lot of authority to go out there and, and, and take people's property, to, to take their, them into custody, to deprive them of their liberties. And in, in very finite scripted situations where, where there's so many nuances to it that sometimes they actually can legitimately take someone's life. We, they have deadly physical force with them at all times. Those, those, those times are so few and far between that uh, I'm glad for that. But yet, the fact that that exists, that our officers, whether it's here in the town of Groton or in Spokane, Washington, or in any other state in this country, they have that authority and that's because the public has put the trust in those individuals. And, and in return for that, we as a profession have to make sure that we vet our people, that we have the best people in this job. And yes, we, we, we need to look like our communities and we all, this department needs to do a better job. But that, every department does. We need to make sure that we have people, like you said, uh, that, that, that go into um, you know, our communities and make sure that those people feel comfortable and, and safe with the people that they're dealing with on, on, from our side. To, to just speak to a couple of things that you mentioned. We adopted last year, it might have been two years ago, but time seems to fly, but every school, every day, our officers, when they're on patrol, they go into the schools that are in their patrol sector. They go in, they visit the students. We want people to feel comfortable with that, but we also want the students and faculty to feel safe. We do have officers uh, at the high school. We have an assigned school resource officer. And through the support of this council, we're gonna have another one at the middle school. So I concur and, and, and I believe what you, uh, are, are, point that you're making here is to make sure our officers engage with our youth. And, and we do that, not just through those venues, but through teaching of dare and getting into the schools and having that sort of stuff. And um, I've been a supporter of that since I've taken this position to make sure that we do have that positive engagement between our officers and our youth. And I want that to continue. And I, I do appreciate and value the support that the Council has provided to make sure that we have other people in the funding to do that. Can we do a better job? I said that from the outset, absolutely. And, and my commitment is we will continue to do that as best we can and continue to improve. So I appreciate your comments, Counselor Borland.
Thank you. Counselor Bum Gardner, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And um, thank you, Chief, for uh, coming before us. It was a pleasant surprise to have you tonight. You know, as you were not on the agenda, but I, I think the time certainly necessitated your presence and so we're thankful um, for you coming out tonight. You know, I, I, I think we, we said it sort of ad nauseam tonight, but our, our policing and, and legal system has historically relied heavily on, on criminalization rather than a crime prevention and restorative practices. And uh, your department has really been at the forefront of implementing policies that would be deemed, you know, progressive policing policies, you know, especially as relates to body cameras. I think you were one of the first departments to implement the policy. And so, you know, you, you have stated yourself, it- it is ensured that, um, you know, your, um, you know, police officers are, are adhering to the law. And, um, you know, it's, it's hard to, uh, uh, twist the truth when, when that, that footage is right before your eyes. So, um, you know, with that being said, I, I, I do think it's important that we continue having these of ongoing discussions. Um, you know, we, as we, many stayed, uh, you know, trust but verify, right? Um, and so, you know, by using a, a set of criteria and resources that, um, you know, local elected officials such as ourselves, um, you know, we, 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 we really do need to evaluate and assess the, the, the department's, uh, ongoing efforts to, you know, enact, um, you know, good, good policing, uh, policy reform, um, by drawing on and, and maintaining those best practices, as you've mentioned, you know, with our, with our body cams. So, you know, whether it's an end to, to the school to prison, um, pu- pipeline, access of use of force, um, property seizure and asset forfeiture, uh, data transparency, independent oversight, um, you know, transparency in police and, and civilian encounters, what are ways that, uh, are, uh, as elected officials that we, um, should be holding you accountable? And, and how, how can we improve that, 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 um, a conversation about what you're doing? Cause I, I think, um, you know, when you talk about these things, it, it provides clarity to, to the public as to, you know, your deployment of, of good, good policing policy. Cause I, I think that's incredibly important.
Uh, to answer that question, I think what we're doing now is, is, uh, hey, that, I'm, I'm here to answer your questions to talk to you, but I don't think it should stop here. I don't think it necessarily needs to happen exclusively at council meetings. You know, my door is always open. I've had a note on my door since I, I took this position saying it's open. And that means it's open to you as well. Obviously, um, I, 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 I respect and value the town manager's input. And I know that he, um, you know, he holds me accountable. He holds the department accountable. When he has questions, he, he asks on either your behalf or on his own to make sure that he knows. So I would, I would invite any of you, if you have an interest in anything that we do, please let me know. And, and some of you have taken me up on that. Some of you have come here and visited and seen the department and, um, asked tough questions, you know, wanted to know why certain things are the way they are. And I, I welcome that. That's why you've got me here, to answer those questions. Uh, but sometimes you want to see it for yourself. So many of those things that have gone through this council and your predecessor and the RTM have been geared at providing you with information, but also our department with the tools to give you that information. We just implemented, uh, a, a pretty expensive, uh, project that resulted in brand new radios for our officers. Uh, those aren't, you know, those are, that's, that people can listen to that. That stuff's out there. You can hear our activities. Um, this council approved funding for a new computer aided dispatch and records management system. That's a record keeping tool for us, uh, not just to provide reports, but to have accountability to, to, to learn what kind of calls that we've responded to. You know, what we've, what we've been doing, what our officers have been investigating and, and, and what they've documented, uh, through the course of their day. So those are all things that are part of that. We've also worked, um, and it's not a, a project that's completed. We, we're totally revamping our policies, which have been, you know, one of the projects that was on my desk when I got here was to start revamping policies. And we've been working with the department, uh, when I say with the department, I mean our officers, to institute those best practices, to get contemporary policing policies, to understand, you know, how practices today aren't what they were in the sixties, seventies, eighties, or even nineties. They're, they're, they're much different. And what the expectations of society are today are much different when they were in our, for our predecessors. Um, I'm here to tell you policing today is a tough job. And, and, um, it, it really is. And the people that we have today, uh, I think are much different than those in our previous generations. Um, so again, to get back to your, your question is to ask, is ask us. And, and you want to come out, some of the counselors here have gone on ride alongs with our officers. They've been out in the, in the field to say, hey, you know, give me an unfiltered, unvarnished, uh, truth as to what's going on in the department, what's going on in our town. Um, um, sometimes that, that will provide people with a different perspective. Um, um, you know, particularly when you, you, you see, you go to calls with officers and you see some of the things that they deal with and, and some of the things that they hear and see out on the streets. It's, it's, it's very, um, informative and, and sometimes kind of eye opening.
Thank you, Chief. All right. Councilor Franco.
Thank you for coming here tonight. Um, and thank you for posting that message from you and the police officers. Uh, I read it and I thought it was a, a message that our community, um, needed to hear from you. And I think that was, uh, that was, it was great. It was, it was needed. So because of what's been going on in our country, I've also been looking to see what I can do as a, you know, a community leader and help make change, um, for the best for our community. And although I don't know all of the issues that people in my community face and, um, their experiences, um, one thing that did pop it, you know, pop up was, and I wanted to talk to you about, and I mean, we can do this, uh, you know, in depth at another time, but like, if there is a complaint from a citizen about maybe something that was, um, maybe what they perceived or, or was, was injustice, um, and I know you have the cameras. What kind, I, I was just curious as to what kind of investigation is had then? Is it just internal or is there, um, a committee that comes together from people that are outside the force and outside the town that maybe come together and review it and, and help figure out if this is something and not, not decided within side the police force? That's what I'm, I was wondering.
Sure. Uh, 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 happy to answer that. Again, we are now institute, or we have been instituting best practices. And one of those things is statewide uniform complaint policy. You can get on the town's website. You go to our, our page and you can get a complaint. You, you fill out a complaint. Uh, you can see what the policy is and how we address it. It does go through a several step process where a person makes a complaint. If they, if they're alleging misconduct by an officer or they're alleging, um, something was dealt with in a way that they weren't happy about. Um, we have a, a codified process for that to go through. They file a complaint and we take, we do take complaints. In fact, recently, within the last couple of days, I had an individual who sent an email. It wasn't on the complaint form, but it's, it, it was a complaint. And, and, um, as we started responding to it, the individual then became upset because we were taking it as a complaint, instead of addressing it through an informal method, which, which really kind of undermines the system that we have, right? We want to make sure that if people have a, a legitimate issue that they want addressed by the police department, we do that. So we take it in, it goes through a supervisory review. Um, I usually get, uh, you know, depending on the level of it, it, if it's, if it's, um, uh, addressed and we find out that through body camera footage or through the information that's provided, that there's some reason for, uh, what happened being legitimate, then we explain that to them. We provide a response. If the officer did something that was wrong, then clearly we, we need to address it. There's a disciplinary process. And we also go through, if, if it's something that rises to the level where it could be, um, criminal conduct, it's reviewed by the state's attorney's office. It's an outside agency. We involve labor attorneys in it. We involve, uh, the town manager many times. He will, he will know our human resources folks. So it isn't all internal. The process is scripted and it is written in, in, um, in policy. And again, we get that from, um, uh, from the Police Officer Standards and Training Council. And there's been legislation in the last couple of years to take a look at that. I'm happy to report that, you know, our officers do, do a really good job. Uh, many of the complaints I get, um, were able to, to, to get to the root cause of it and the facts. And sometimes, um, sometimes the complaints are without merit. Uh, sometimes there is merit to them. Uh, and our, our job is to, to, as trained investigators, to look into that. And we do that pretty thoroughly. Um, and again, we report to different, you know, I report to the town manager. I tell him on a regular basis of every complaint that comes in, the things that we're dealing with. Um, so he's aware of it, uh, but certainly some of them need to take its course. And some of them take, in some cases, months to, to, to get through. Um, does that kind of answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you. Um, and I, I agree with you that, um, I have been able to come up there and talk to you whenever I have needed to. And you, you do have an open door policy and I appreciate that. And, um, I have gone on the ride along and it is eye opening. And, um, if anybody on the council wants to go, they, they would welcome us. So I wanted to do it again, but COVID struck, so I was, um, sidelined for a little bit. And when I did go out, it was a very quiet night. So I think we pulled over, uh, one person and he, he got a warning. So that was my night. But I did learn a lot from the eyes of a police officer of things that are going on in town. It was, it was eye opening of things that I, I didn't know. So I thank you for that and allowing me that opportunity. Thanks.
Well, thank you again, Chief, for coming out this evening and, um, be safe out there. And hopefully we'll see your team on Sunday.
You will. And, uh, and I do want to thank the council, you, you know, I, our officers appreciate your support. We value that. Um, you know, we're talking about accountability and, and, and I will tell you that our officers are hurting just as much as anybody else. Because just like if you were on a team and somebody in that team did something really bad, um, your team would be hurting. Our team is hurting too. You know, we know what happened was wrong and we know that, that there's been injustices, uh, across the country. We don't want them here. Our officers take pride in the job that they're doing. Uh, they want you to know that. They, they want you to know that they appreciate your support and they want the community to know that. Our officers have high standards. They will continue to have high standards. They are proud of the job that they do. They're proud of where they work. And they want the public to know that we understand where you're coming from. We understand what you're saying. We hear the pain that's out there. Uh, we share it with you. And, uh, our commitment as, as public servants, as police officers is for constant improvement and we will continue to do the best job we can under all circumstances. Thanks.
Thank you again, Chief. Good night. Um, I have, um, this evening, uh, communication from the superintendent of schools. Dr. Grineer sent it along. He couldn't be here this evening, so he asked that I read it into the record. An update regarding Groton Public Schools' high school graduation. The High School Administration and Graduation Committee has been working hard to develop the plans for the June nineteenth, the drive-in graduation ceremony in an electric boat parking lot. The ceremony will begin at eight thirty PM. The rain date for the graduation will be Monday, June twenty second. The event will be broadcast live. See the Fitch High School website for the link. As far as the food service program, the staff continues to distribute meals at three sites. Mary Morrison School, Groton Public Library and Branford Manor. Meals sufficient for seven days are given out on Monday, Wednesday and Friday. Bernie Koschmider was informed that the State Department has determined that Groton Middle School will not be eligible for the community eligibility provision, which had allowed Westside students free meals during the year. Next year at Groton Middle School, only those students who qualify for free or reduced meals will receive that benefit. All others will pay the regular price. That's disheartening to hear. That's my editorial opinion there. Um, the Connecticut State Department of Education has published the distribution figures for the CARES Act education funding. The guidance for expending the funds includes provisions to ensure appropriate technology, provision of educational services to students with disabilities, addressing learning gaps and providing social, emotional support to educators and students. Broton's allocation is six hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars. The district staff is developing a plan to use the funds in accordance with state guidelines. The funds have not yet arrived. Once we have the funding, uh, Dr. Grineer will make a full report to the Board of Education and Town Council. As far as the return to school roadmap, Groton Public Schools is working with the Connecticut Center for School Change to develop a plan to reopen schools this fall. The program is entitled Return to School Roadmap. Participating districts are encouraged to organize their efforts in several areas. Our plan has six committees, Governance, Instruction and Technology, Operations, Facilities, Wellness and Post-Secondary. The planning group will participate in a series of online workshops and then share planning concepts with each committee. Over the last couple of weeks, Susan Austin and Dr. Grineer have been working with, um, Dennis Kokwah and other staff members to develop a technology reentry plan. We know that the district will have to replace several computers and other technology devices in preparation for fall opening. The IT equipment plan has two components. One, the equipment we anticipate and the software needed to expand and enhance distance learning. Groton Middle School update. The construction is on time and on budget. We anticipate the building will be substantially complete by June thirtieth and will open as scheduled on September first. The staff at Westside and Cutler Middle Schools is packing up all the equipment, supplies and other materials for the move to Groton Middle School by the end of June. Elementary schools. Construction has begun at both school sites. Excavation of the foundations has begun and we anticipate that the portable classrooms will be moved at the end of June. The planning department has approved the relocation of the portable adjacent to the central office. And that ends Dr. Grineer's report. Thank you, Dr. Grineer, for sending that along, for the enlightenment of the council and the public. All right, we are on to committee reports. Um, I have no report. We just had the committee meeting. Temporary rules.
No meeting.
Personnel appointments. Chairman Melendez.
Yes, uh, we met on May nineteenth. We didn't have any interviews, um, with new committee members, but we did make recommendations to fill the ad hoc, um, boards. I'll just read the recommendations we made. Uh, we recommended Juan Melendez to Children First Groton, Bida Schmidt to Eastern Tourism District, Patrice Granatoski to Golf Advisory Board, Joseph Perry to Mystic Cooperative Task Force, Leanne Aubrey and Greg Hanover to SCARA, Joseph Perry and Mary Lou Smith to S C C T Water Advisory Board, Andre Baumgartner and Juan Melendez to Trails Coordinating Task Force. And that's all the business we had at our last meeting.
Thank you. And those will appear on our next council meeting for, um, vote for the pertinent ones that have to go before the council. We are on to new business, Roman numeral ten, uh, twenty twenty, three, six, two, one. Computation of tax rate for general fund. And I would ask you all to, um, locate your resolutions, please. And, um, Councilor Baumgartner, would you like to begin? Since you made the motion in committee, or would you like me to go to someone else?
I, I, I'd be happy to do so. Um, I have, because I read it, I should have it open. So if you bear with me.
Certainly. This is twenty twenty, three, six, two, one, computation of tax rate for general fund. That's just read for the clerk.
Oh, I do want to make sure that I'm reading the proper resolution. One second. All right. So I will make a motion for the resolution establishing tax rate for general fund taxes due on July fourth, twenty twenty. Whereas the representative town meeting has approved a general fund budget for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, providing for expenditure appropriations totaling a hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars. I'm sorry. Thirty million, four hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars. And whereas the town council estimates cash revenue exclusive of F Y E twenty twenty-one current property taxes will total thirty-nine million, seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars. Now therefore be it resolved that zero dollars is hereby appropriated as fund balance available as of July first, twenty twenty to partially meet expenditure appropriations contained in the F Y E twenty twenty-one general fund budget. And be it further resolved that ninety-one million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars is the amount that needs to be raised from property taxes. And be it further resolved that the tax rate for taxes due July first, twenty twenty is hereby established at twenty-five point eleven mils per thousand dollars of assessed valuation to raise ninety-one million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars. And that's ninety-one million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars divided by three billion, seven hundred and nine million, eight hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Divided by ninety-eight point one percent times one thousand equals twenty-five point one one mils. So moved.
I will second that. Moved by Baumgartner, seconded by Granatoski. Is there a discussion on this motion? Councilor Borderline.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to throw an amended number on the floor, if possible. I can't hear you.
I don't believe that's possible at this point. The resolution has been prepared already and the finance director is not with us.
But that's not really my problem. I'm thinking, I'm asking, is it, can it happen? Or is it, you're saying it just can't happen because the finance director's not here? I'd like to move, I'd like to make a motion for the second option for $750,000. I think that's a good middle road.
I don't think you can make a substantive change at this point. I think you'd have to go back to a cow. But I'd have to talk to our attorney to verify.
Because I'm just looking at the numbers again. I think the 750 is a mid-road without doing.
Okay, so there's a motion. We don't have a second yet.
I'll second.
That's using some of the fund balance, but not all of it. Or, yeah, not the original number that was used. So not doing zero, but meeting it midway.
Repeat that, please, the amount.
This, I'll just say option two per the packet item that was given, so the 750,000.
What is the collection rate you're using?
Well, let me open it up. One second. I think I'm looking at the top option here, which would be the 98.1 collection rate.
So using 750,000 in fund balance and 98.1% collection rate moved by Bordelon, seconded by Franco. Is there a discussion on this item?
I'll just repeat that I think it's a great middle road option. It's not using as much fund balance, but it's giving, it's adjusting the middle rate a little bit, but not at a zero rate. And I think it's a good mid-road option to meet the needs of the town.
I see no other discussion. We will vote on the second amended figure, which is using $750,000 as fund balance, assuming a 98.1% collection rate. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 In favor are Bordelon and, I heard another voice.
Parker.
Parker. And Zepari, opposed.
Heed.
If you could please keep your hands up. Aubrey, Franco, Melendez, Baumgartner, Heed, and Granatoski. No abstentions. We have three in favor, six opposed, zero abstentions. That motion fails. That takes us back to our original motion, which is for zero use of fund balance, assuming a 98.1% collection rate. I will call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? If you could keep your hand up, if you're opposed, please. Opposed, Zepari and Bordelon and Parker, correct?
Correct.
Any abstentions? So six in favor, three opposed, Zepari, Bordelon, Parker, zero abstentions. That motion passes. We are on to 2020, 3631, computation of tax rate for Mumford Cove. And this is in your packet. Councilor Parker, do you want to go ahead with this, or should I call on someone else?
Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. Resolution establishing tax rate. Mom.
We could hear you, but now we can't.
Due July 1st. No?
No.
Okay. I give up.
Okay. I, I, how about I read it and we'll go. Resolution establishing, this is for 2020, 3631, computation of tax rate for Mumford Cove. Resolution establishing tax rate for Mumford Cove District due July 1st, 2020. Whereas the representative town meeting has approved a Mumford Cove District budget for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021, providing for expenditure appropriations totaling $21,180. And whereas the town council estimated cash revenue exclusive of FYE 2021 current property taxes will total zero. Now therefore be it resolved that $700 is hereby appropriated as fund balance available as of July 1st, 2020 to partially meet expenditure appropriations contained in the FYE 2021 Mumford Cove District budget. And be it further resolved that the tax rate for taxes due for the Mumford Cove District Fund on July 1st, 2020 is hereby established at 0.33 mils per thousand dollars of assessed valuation to raise $20,480. $20,480 divided by 62,970,923 divided by 99.5% times 1,000 equals 0.33 mils. I so move.
Second.
I didn't hear who the second was. I'm sorry. Counselors Zepari, moved by Granatoski, seconded by Zepari. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. Counselor Franco, would you take the sewer district, please? This is 2020, 3641, computation of tax rate for Groton Sewer District.
Resolution establishing tax rate for the Groton Sewer District due July 1st, 2020. Whereas representative town meeting has approved the Groton Sewer District budget for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021, providing for expenditure appropriations totaling And whereas the town council estimated cash revenue exclusive of FYE 2021. There's an error there. Current property taxes will total $5,900. Now therefore be resolved that $50,000 is hereby appropriated as fund balance available as of July 1st, 2020 to partially meet expenditure appropriations contained in FYE 2021. Sewer District Fund Budget and be it further resolved that the tax rate for the taxes due for the Groton Sewer District Fund on July 1st, 2020 is hereby established at .56 mils per thousand dollars of assessed valuation to raise $1,342,845, which is calculated as $1,342,845 divided by $2,414,523,987 dollars excluding motor vehicles divided by 99.3% times 1,000 equals .56 mils. I so move.
Was the second, please?
Aye.
Thank you. Moved by Franco, seconded by Aubrey. All those in favor of 2020, 3641? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are on to 2022, 721, suspense list, FYE 2020.
It's 272, right? 2022.
272, yes, I'm sorry. Did I misread?
So I'll make a motion for a resolution establishing the fiscal year 2020 suspense list. Whereas state law requires that once a year, a list shall be compiled of taxes that should be suspended. And whereas the accounts which have been determined and uncollectible have been contacted multiple times with no response. And whereas placing uncollected items on the suspense list helps avoid waste of money and staff time. And whereas the taxpayers remain liable for all amounts that are placed on the suspense list now, therefore be it resolved that the following amounts be added to the suspense list as reported to the town council. Town, $389,541.77. Sewer District, $1039. Mumford Cove, $15.62. For a total of $389,657.78. I so move.
Second, Bordelon.
Moved by Heed and seconded by Bordelon. Counselor Bordelon.
I know that I asked this at the meeting when this had come up. I just hope that the addresses that we have a hard lead on, that they're still going to be actively followed to try to collect. I mean, that is a large number. And I think as a town, especially in hard times, we need to make sure we're going, you know, and doing all avenues. So I know it's a suspension list and they're still liable, but saving staff time and postage. But if there are hard leads with active addresses that we continue to pursue. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, we will vote on 2022, 721, suspense list, FYE 2020. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you. We are on to 2020, 1884, Neighborhood Assistance Act. And Mr. Burt sent a revised. Nope, nope, he did not. Wrong item, sorry. We have the Neighborhood Assistance Act, which is in your packet, and I believe we are on Counselor Aubrey.
I'm sorry. I just sent you a note that I gotta leave. I got a terrible headache.
I'm sorry to hear that. Thank you. Hope you feel better.
Thank you.
Counselor Bordelon, are you next to read, or shall we go to Counselor Melendez?
I'll pass tonight. Thank you.
Counselor Melendez, could you take 2021, 88, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
I make a resolution to approve the 2020 Neighborhood Assistance Act proposals for the Bill Memorial Library, Eastern Connecticut Housing Opportunities, Sacred Heart School, Groton Housing Authority, Fairview, and Avery Cop Museum. Whereas the Town of Groton has received proposals from the Bill Memorial Library, Eastern Connecticut Housing Opportunities, Sacred Heart School, Groton Housing Authority, Fairview, and Avery Cop Museum for the 2020 Neighborhood Assistance Act. And whereas the Town of Groton Department of Planning and Development Services received a proposal from each of these entities and acknowledged that the post-program review will be their responsibility. And whereas the town council held a public hearing on the 2020 Neighborhood Assistance Act applications on May 5th, 2020. And whereas the Town of Groton, Groton Town Council supports the proposals from each of these entities, now therefore be it resolved that the town council hereby approves the proposals for the Bill Memorial Library, Eastern Connecticut Housing Opportunities, Sacred Heart School, Groton Housing Authority, Fairview, and the Avery Cop Museum for the 2020 Neighborhood Assistance Act. I so move.
Second.
Was that Baumgartner for the second?
Yes, indeed.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Baumgartner. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously with eight counselors, as Counselor Aubrey has left us. All right. So now we are on to 2020, 3061, and this is the item. Mr. Burt, did you want to address this at all?
Sure. The planning staff had originally intended to apply for $70,000 in grant funding. They found out there were some other requirements that need to be done, so they're looking at $85,000. I've sent out an updated resolution. Nothing changed in the results, so there's nothing. You know, it's just one of the whereas's to reflect accurately that it's $85,000, so is that substantive?
Very good. Thank you. Counselors Zepari, do you have the updated resolution to read?
That was in my packet. I can, I can read it in substitute $85,000 where it says 70.
That's the only change, correct, Mr. Burt?
Correct.
Yes, please, Counselors Zepari. That would be most helpful.
Resolution to endorse the Long Island Sound Futures Fund Grant application for the Residency and Sustainability Assessment in Downtown Mystic. Whereas the Long Island Sound Futures Fund, LISFF, has issued a request for grant proposals for environmental and sustainability projects in the Long Island Sound watershed. And whereas the OPBS staff plans to apply for funding in the amount of $85,000 to complete a residency and sustainability assessment in downtown Mystic. And whereas the purpose of applying for this grant is to give the Town of Groton a full picture of the potential threats to human health, existing infrastructure, and environment caused by climate change and sea level rise. Whereas if the town receives the funding, the assessment could commence as soon as this fall and would be completed in 12 to 18 months. And therefore, and there, and now therefore be it resolved that the town council authorizes Town Manager John Burt or his authorized representative to submit an application to the Long Island Sound Futures Fund. I so move.
Second. You're muted.
Thank you. Mr. Burt, I'm looking at the last line of, of that item. The resolved is slightly different in the in the adjustment. Did you, did you notice that, sir?
Oh, I didn't notice that.
Yeah. The, the, the adjusted resolution says, or his authorized representative to apply for, execute, and accept the Long Island Sound Futures Fund Grant.
Okay.
So Counselors Zepari and Counselor Franco, would you kindly adjust your resolution to reflect that language?
Let me to extend my second.
If, if you so desire, yes. Counselors Zepari?
I agree.
Okay. So then I'm not going to make you read the whole thing again. Can, I'll just add in, we're, the only thing we're changing is resolved that the town council authorizes Town Manager John Burt or his authorized representative to apply for, execute, and accept the Long Island Sound Futures Fund Grant. Counselors Zepari, is that, are you accept?
Yes.
Are you pleased to move that?
Yes.
Moved by Zepari. Counselor Franco, did you wish to second? Thank you. All right, all those in favor of 2020, 306, Long Island Sound Futures Grant as revised and read this evening, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously with eight counselors. We are at 9:57 and we are at the end of the agenda. We have other business? Seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Moved by Parker. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Franco. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously with eight counselors at 9:58 PM. Thank you all very much. Everyone be safe.
Thanks everyone. Good night.
Good night.